Good afternoon. Good afternoon, school board, Dr. Hernandez and district staff. The time is now five oh four PM on September thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and I call this board workshop meeting of the Edgewood Independent School District's school board to order. Roll call, Dr. James Hernandez, I'm here. Mr. Joe Sofiaera.
President.
Mr. Frankie Seminoza.
President.
Mr. Luis Gomez.
President.
Sir Michael Valdez.
I'm not here.
Mr. Richard Santoyo.
Here.
And Martha Unabige, this is Martha Garcia will be joining us tonight. Let the record show that a form of the Independent School District of the Edgewood Independent School District's school board is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And now, everyone, please join us for the U.S. Fledge of Allegiance and Texas pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I am proud of the United States of America and the Republic of America, and represent a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, Dr. Hernandez, do we have any communication presence?
No, sir, we do not have any communication.
Thank you. And your other board members, sir?
Yes, Mr. Joe. All right, yes, so a quick, just a few items to consideration this evening. First of all, thank you for joining us for our regularly October scheduled workshop. I know it's September thirtieth, but I will bring to everybody's attention tomorrow is National Night Out, October first, so we did move the date up early because we do have various neighborhood associations tomorrow that will have National Night Out. But maybe to do so as well, we have our National Night Out tomorrow, which is going to be led by our Director of Parent Services, Mr. George Gavica, who will see the picture over there. Tonight's meeting is a continuation of our ongoing conversation with our community, those who are present and quoted with our board members, to bring in a focus for you, the items that we are asking for you to support, in terms of the items that will end up at the October fifteenth regular school board meeting, as well as tonight, we will have our continued accountability conversation around the ways that we support our schools. Last month, you heard from our three high school principals about the work and the challenges that they have in terms of making sure they attain accountability matters that are expected of them. But tonight, you will hear from our academic services department and how they're supporting that work that's going on in our schools. Obviously, all of that with the expressed intent that we reach our number one outcome, which is to graduate our scholars, college, career, and what you're great by their respective day of graduation. To do that, follow our three core values. So what I highlight today, Ms. Ellie, who is in our Human Research Department. Ms. Ellie is our Risk Management Coordinator for the school district. She does a really good job of just getting in front of everything from our folks' individual needs, and she is a colleague of our life and clinics, mental health clinics, different things that she provides for our employees. I want to highlight Ellie because, again, she's been in our district a few years now. She does quite an effective job of communicating to our staff the different services that are ready for her. I mentioned to you earlier, George Gavica, who is over our parent services division. We do have a parent university this Friday, October fourth, that is from, I'm not here. From ten to eleven fifteen, all right, Emma Frey. Again, this is one of our EISD parent universities, and our contact person is going to be appreciated, Gavica's information will be at the end. And then, of course, our last one is actually our board president, I didn't realize, she said I could say this, I'll mention this, because she had surgery, so she's not here today, she'll be back in just a few days. But there is a lot of work that she's been doing as well in our community around the more advanced school system, that is part of just the work that she brings to educating the living leaders in our homes in the school district. And so I want to acknowledge her work through the communication business, because that's always been at the top of what she provides in terms of the services for the school district. Boarding committee, tonight, you're going to hear from a couple of presentations, as I mentioned to you earlier, you're going to hear about all the items that are coming up for a vote on the fifteenth. Specifically, you'll hear about the items that are new. As we mentioned at the beginning of this school year, we would spend most of our year this year talking about academic outcomes and how we're supporting those challenges. And so, as I mentioned, you heard from high school principals, so today you'll hear from academic services. Next month, you'll hear from all our middle school principals at the November workshop, and then in so on, you'll have someone here every month. But tonight, as part of the regular monthly case board, you will be getting your board update this Friday, you received one last Friday, but when this Friday, we'll have all the talking points that are particular to the items that are going on for this time. You'll get a second one on the eleventh, from the members of this team, if you have any specific questions or anything comes up, that will also be added in the update, that's always added for everybody. Once you ask a question, go out with the answer. You have our regular board meeting on the fifteenth, and then you'll get another board update on the twenty fifth. A reminder, we do not do a board update the Friday immediately after a board meeting. So that's the board monthly case this month. But tonight, you're going to hear from our leadership team, they're going to be presenting on a couple of items, they're going to be talking about the district improvement plan as well as the LSG monthly evaluation, which we're hearing from Mr. Chavez. That's the cover of academic services, and they'll be presenting, that's why you see all the men who will be here on the side. And then, of course, we will finish up with the business and finance presentation. I'll be bringing that to you, because Martina's is not here tonight, she was a little ill, so I'll be presenting that item on her behalf tonight. And then we'll close out. Just as a reminder, the fifteenth is the regular board meeting, November fourth is our next workshop. Why is that important? In discussing with the board officers, that meeting is going to also be on a Monday. It was scheduled on the Tuesday, which is Presidential Evening Night. And most of you would agree, that's going to be pretty busy, pretty hopping around the nation. And so, we're going to have that on Monday, we start at five, and then, as I mentioned earlier, you'll have the middle school presidents presenting that day. And then, of course, our regular board meeting is on the... I don't think it's the forty ninth.
Nineteenth.
It's the nineteenth, sorry, we have a two instead of a one, but we'll correct that. And so, that will be the board meeting for November, and that puts pretty much the Thanksgiving highlights. Like I said, I will turn it over to our first group that's presenting the meeting, and I believe that is Mr. Chavez.
Sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice President James Hernandez, school board members, Dr. Hernandez, superintendent, staff that are here today. Want to just kind of frame the conversation, you all will be hearing a presentation from the academics department, and they're going to cover several key goals here that you see in our district strategic plan. Again, throughout the presentation, what you're going to find is a direct connection between the actions that are happening in our schools and the goals that you all have adopted in the district strategic plan. In terms of our board norms, I want to round us in two of the norms, I'm not going to read all of them, but number one, it says seek first to understand. Some of this might be some new learning for you all. And then, the fifth is to ask questions for clarification to help avoid making assumptions. So those are the two norms I'd like for us to focus on during today's presentation. Now, I want to talk a little bit about the question and answer process for tonight. Part of the Lone Star Governance Framework does establish that there are some key board responsibilities, right, in that framework, when it comes to school improvement. One is to set clear goals. You all have done that by adopting the goals in the district strategic plan, LSG goals. Monitoring progress, that's what we're doing here today, and what we do at all of our board workshops. Supporting effective leadership, you being here, being supportive, understanding the initiatives, approving the resources, that helps to support the district in improving student outcomes. Engaging community, these are recorded, a lot of the initiatives that we have, and the one coming up in October is to engage community. Also, foster mental culture, continuous improvement, this is really key. We all know that improvement takes time to get traction, to get going, and so we're very appreciative of the laser focus you all have had, and understanding what it is that we're doing, and supporting the work that happens in our schools. And then, reviewing and adjusting policies. There are several policies that come up and report, you all ensure that those policies align to the work that needs to happen in schools, and needs the compliance recommendation of the federal state. And then ensuring accountability, ensuring that we're all held accountable for the work that we have. So tonight, I'd like to ask that we hold our questions, you can each have some handouts of the presentation, as our presenters are presenting the information, please jot any wonderings that you have when we're done, and they're done presenting, we'll go ahead and pause for questions. And with that being said, I will turn this over to the academics department.
If you can hear me. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Vice President Dr. Hernandez and Superintendent Hernandez and seat board members for the newest opportunity to present our academic services support plan. As previously stated by our superintendent, our high schools were able to come and present relative to the work that they're doing on a daily basis at the campus. And so, our next step here is to then how we from the academic services department support secondary schools around our work, which is things we've achieved. So today's very outcomes are very separate. We're going to just pretty much lay out how we support campuses in the sense of increasing student achievement, how we help and support and improve college career military readiness, what we call CCMR, and then also how we help keep families engaged and informed. And so, those are the three main drivers that we're going to raise here today. Behind me, you'll notice I have a team, because nothing can be done by one individual takes a team to really help and support the schools. And these are the team members of each of the departments that play a critical role in supporting the schools. Of course, beginning with Dr. Teresa Silva, who is Senior Director of Teaching and Learning. Chosso Bordelegas, Senior Director of Advanced Academics and Multiannual Services. Of course, Donald, Senior Director of Early Childhood Accelerated Learning, Dr. Mary Miller Baker. Josei Moposa, Senior Director of Educational Operations, and our newest member of the team, Ms. Jennifer Benat, who will be our new Director of Special Education. George Gavica, Director of Family Community Engagement, and of course, Javier Uribe, Director of Career Technology and Education, better known as CTE. All our work is grounded in supporting Vision 2028 for Edgewood ISD. And our main focal point and our plan is all grounded on an accelerated learning. For us, during the route, we speak about two priorities, guaranteeing about the curriculum and tier one instruction. That has not changed, and it's always grounded on our career of action. If we implement the guaranteed level curriculum and tier one instruction effectively, so our teachers can deliver high-quality instruction on grade level, their students will learn, and then ease growth up here, that is the bottom my risk. So let's first talk about the journey, okay? So we are now entering year three, so let's talk about our journey beginning back to twenty-two, twenty-three. As I recall, for during that time is when we first started really getting clear about what are the expectations around tier one and supplemental instructional materials. Far to that, I think there was still a lot of questions around what am I supposed to be teaching at your level at that? So chair, twenty-two, twenty-three was a year when we said means of the tier one materials, that we want to basically have access for all students in our district. Moving into twenty-three, twenty-four, last year was more about measuring, implementing measuring than use of the tier one materials. So we wanted to ensure that there was a walkthrough form, or we were able to, we started looking at how classrooms were using and utilizing those tier one materials, what I call compliance. This year, the key is looking into twenty-four, twenty-five, now we're looking into implementation with fidelity. One thing to have compliance in using materials, but now this year, our charge is to really implement effectively in all classrooms, so that kids have rigorous activities. It's not just enough just to give the materials, now that we have to implement and use the materials in the way they're intended to be used. That is our journey. So when we present here today, we want to ensure that it's grounded around our goals. Edgewood ISD, North Star goal, academic core content, accelerated learning, and special programs, you'll hear about those three areas and how that supports the North Star goal. Under goal priority one, which we call CCMR, College Career Military Readiness, you'll hear about career tech and academics and network, and supporting that. And as far as these is goal four, priority two, which is improving our two-way communication, you're going to hear from Mr. George Gavica in all the elements to include parent university, avoid illegal, project in matter, and superintendent initiatives. Always ground your other work, again, this is the North Star goal, core content, accelerated learning, and special programs, this is how we're going to present, core content, we're going to be measured, we're looking at needs, or Sario C, accelerated learning, the endgame for that is reducing the amount of students that require accelerated learning, and then our special programs and implementation, it's always about achievement and compliance. Okay, so to kick us off, we're going to first start off with the academic core, supports of secondary campuses, and Dr. Teresa Silva.
Thank you, Dr. Barzuko. As mentioned previously, my name is Teresa Silva, and I have the privilege of serving as the Senior Director of Teaching and Learning. In this section, I am going to present out how we are supporting the academic core. When we reference the academic core, we are talking about the foundational subjects that include reading and language arts, math, science, and social studies. As Dr. Barzuko previously stated, our supports are driven by the two instructional priorities that are up on tier. Just a quick review of the key terms that we will hear as referenced in this section. The guaranteed and viable curriculum, at the heart of the GBC, we are talking about ensuring that there's consistency in what is taught and learned in all of our schools and all of our classrooms across the EISD. Tier one instruction is promoting the teaching and learning practices that we expect to see where it matters most in the classroom. And this includes daily routines and procedures that our teachers are delivering, is the actual delivery of instruction, and the support for all of our learners. When it comes to our key initiatives in priority one, this includes the development of standards for how we select high-quality instructional materials. So when we bring those items to you board, we have done late work and collaborative work together with campus leaders, members of the instructional technology team, the content experts, to ensure that we are investing our money in the right resources and ensuring that we are going to see a yield of positive student learning outcomes as well. Next, I'd like to draw your attention and highlight our academic core leaders and their direct support that they are providing to our campuses. In this image, you see Ms. Raquel Moposa, she is our secondary mathematics coordinator, and she is working together with Algebra One teachers in a structured professional learning environment. Together, they are studying the upcoming unit guides, they are unpacking key concepts, and they are thinking through the teaching practices that are going to be delivered in just a few weeks in the classroom. These professional learning sessions are offered during our SCAP development day, but we also work with the campus leaders to provide additional things for some of these high-leverage units. This is just one example of how our academic coordinators and service team is out in the field supporting our teachers and the campus leaders with unit and lesson study sessions. And this practice supports not just our novice or new teachers, but also our veteran teachers as well. When it comes to tier one instruction, we also work in collaboration with the Office of School Leadership, together as district leaders, we join together, and this includes our senior leaders, our academic coordinators, together with our principals and our instructional coaches to walk classrooms and to offer content expertise as we observe teaching and learning together with our principals. In this image, you see our most recent visit to Gus Garcia University, where you see Mr. Garcia, who is the lead learner in this session. And as I mentioned, we walk together, we look at different data trends in terms of the culture of learning walkthrough tool that Dr. Barzuko referenced earlier, and we look to see whether or not we have evidence of effective implementation. These data trends that we collect also allow us to consider how we work to continue to support the campus leaders to close the teaching and the learning gap through professional development and coaching cycles. This classroom data also paired with assessment data that we start to receive allows us to support data-driven instructional practices and support our campus leaders as they think through continuous school improvement. Our very first session will be this coming Thursday, as we lead our campus leaders in reflective practices. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge and simply thank the collective work that we have executed in the first six weeks of school. Here in these images, again, you see our coordinators, our instructional coaches, you see partners from Region Twenty and the Service Center working alongside our teachers to ensure that we are holding true to our intended outcome, which is to support our teachers with lesson internalization. That means that our teachers really are thinking through that lesson plan, they're thinking through their delivery, and they're thinking through the lens of a student and how a student will receive that in the daily practice. Thank you for your time, I'm going to turn it over now to Dr. Mary Miller Baker, who will discuss accelerated learning.
Good evening. So in our district, provides a wealth of support in the core academic areas, there's always that group of kids that needs a little bit more, and there are certain gaps that we are responsible for filling, and I insist need to be addressed beyond the tier one instruction, and that's where the concept of accelerated learning comes in. In our district, we have an accelerated learning component that includes MTSS, which is our system of reviewing all children, and providing the right kind of services that they may need in addition to their regular program. This may be services like dyslexia, or reviewing them for five oh four, this could be students who temporarily need homebound, or these can even be extended beyond the school day into the after-school programs and summer learning. But one of the biggest tools in accelerated learning is what we know as House Bill fourteen sixteen. A couple of years ago, we introduced you to the concept of House Bill forty-five, forty-five. It has now been updated in the last legislature to fourteen sixteen. What is House Bill fourteen sixteen? Well, under my key terms, you'll see that's legislation that mandates that children who are not successful, and in this case specifically on STAR or in the course, receive specific services that will allow them to perform on grade level. And those services may come in the form of what we call accelerated instruction. Accelerated instruction is supplemental, it's small group, it's targeted, and it has many parameters that must be followed precisely in order to be gauged as successful. And finally, this year, we're going to look at something new called a ratio waiver list. As the state decided that a certain amount of small group instruction would be provided, the state also mandated that it would be done within a reasonable group size, in other words, four to one. Well, that becomes overwhelming for school districts who have a large number of children who may need to be served, and so last summer, something that just ended, a new addition was added, and that's ratio waiver list. So let's talk about what's new. One of the main responsibilities of our department is to be the experts on areas. Our schools deal with so many different facets of education, that it is our job to back them up by knowing the details. And so, as we start each school year, we'll come back to our campus principals and other staff, and we'll let them know, this is what's changed, this is what's new, this is what you need to keep your eye on. So in fourteen sixteen this year, there were four major changes. The first one was a very positive one, and that the number of kids in high school who need fourteen sixteen services has decreased simply by the way the state mandates it. The rule originally said that any time you failed, you had to get thirty hours, and if you failed a second retest, you got thirty more hours, and if you happened to take it a third time, you got additional hours. Well, finally, for this year, the state has clearly stated, no, you will only be given mandated services for the hours on the first test that you take. This is a very big burden being relieved from our students. So does it mean they're not from our students and from our staff? Does it mean they're not going to help the children? Of course it doesn't, because children still need to pass their tests in order to graduate, but the parameters and the accountability and the record-keeping portion has been relieved, so teachers can focus more on delivering the instruction. So that's one big change that our high schools are taking advantage of. The second one is the introduction of the ratio waiver list. And what this means is that we can hire certain vetted products that have gone through scrutiny by the state, and we can use them in groups larger than the four to one. This has taken a great relief from us, where we were having to find additional people, additional staff, additional hours, and additional groupings. Now, we're able to keep children together and serve more children through the use of high-quality vetted programs. The next change is not so positive in some ways, it's that now all of this is reported directly to the state in the form of our P E E M submission. And all of us here know that our P E E M submission is critical, that it is correct, that it is accurate, as it is tied to our funding and tied to how our district is viewed. And so, this spring and summer, we will submit our first P E E M submission regarding House Bill fourteen sixteen. The good news is, we've been pretending like it was going to happen all along, because we knew it was coming, and so our campuses are well-prepared in how to track this information, but now it's for real. And then, the last new change is the TIA. You should be very familiar with them by now, I know Mr. Chavez and others have come before you, and presented these wonderful teachers who have been finely recognized by the states for excelling in their work with students. Now, being a TIA teacher works with the House Bill fourteen sixteen plan, and students who are part of House Bill fourteen sixteen and are in a TIA teacher's classroom can receive their services simultaneously. So with the three of these items, RWL, the change in high school, and the TIA teachers, our system has gotten a little easier to manage. The fact that our scores are slightly improving has also made our system a little easier to manage, less students needing services, easier to count and focus on the ones that do. But the fact that we are reporting this directly to the state this year has increased our scrutiny. Now, the next slide is going to freak you out just a little bit, but that's okay. Prior to this school year, there were four major ways that our district could serve kiddos who needed fourteen sixteen services. And try to sit down with about five hundred services needed and figure out which of those models will work is a daunting task, but that's what we're here for, that's why we need to provide direct support. And so, it could be that you retain a child, and that counts for their services, or it could be you pull them out into a small group, and that would count. Or you could do a little group in the back of the room with a second teacher, or you could take a group of kids and put them online with a teacher, but there were four options. Now that the change is in the rule, we have three additional options. So, there's more than one way, just get a cat, and you'll notice that's a hairless cat, so we've already skinned it. That's supposed to be fun. So now, our new options, our TIA teachers, which is our super teacher, who could serve all of those kids just by having them in their class and getting quality instruction every day, or by using an RWL program, where you can serve more than the four to one, or finally, by putting all of these designs together in a single classroom, serving some kids with an RWL, serving some kids with an online teacher, and serving some kids with the teacher themselves. It's a huge puzzle, and it's very complicated, because it needs to be geared to individual students' needs, and like I said, that's where we come in, that's where it's our job to help them. So, what do we do? We literally sit down with each campus with their campus coordinator for fourteen sixteen, which is one of their assistant principals, and we work through the numbers. And those are the actual sheets from our Kennedy and Las Palmas meetings from the beginning of the year. From there, we figure out how large you should task, how many resources do you have to serve, and how can we get the kids the mandated hours in time for the test? And basically, what resulted from that is a personalized And basically, what resulted from that is a personalized design. Each one of our campuses, their design is a little bit different because it's based on the need of that particular student. So finally, to keep track of all this, the state has not created any specific tracking tool, nor has any one individual who could be making a lot of money from this. But fortunately, two years ago, we created our own tracking tool, and we have revised it as the state has mandated different uses and different requirements for our P E M's reporting. So we have a tracking tool. The blacked-out section is individual student information because this is an actual tool. And it contains all of the elements that are going to be reported to P E M's at the end of the year. So as services are delivered along the way, our campuses keep track of this. It is a huge task. I don't want to make you feel that it isn't, because it is. But when it's time to send this into the state, everything is there, everything's ready. So we've created this tracker for them. We've also trained them using one of our programs on data suites. And then we've also used our district evaluator to pull reports so that it would be easier for campuses to pull these trackers. All of these tools together allow us to capture the individual data so that when we submit P E M's in June, it will be a clean submission. So finally, along the way, we need to provide training, we need to provide monitoring, we need to provide support, and we need to hold our campuses accountable. And so we started at the beginning of the year, before kids got here, working with principals and vice principals to make sure they knew what was going on and what the expectation was. And now throughout the year, we're having ongoing trainings for the coordinator, and we're having checkpoints. We did our first round today, starting with the high schools to see, hey, guys, six weeks of instruction is on. That's a sixth of your time to provide services. Where are you at? Where do you need to accelerate? What do we need to change so that you can be successful? So as we move through the year, we will be in compliance with this, but compliance is just the first step towards quality. More important than complying with something that the state has mandated, we will be using this tool to ensure that ultimately our scores improve and our students do better. Now I'm going to turn it over to our newest member of the team, Ms. Renal, along with her counterpart, Joseph Rodriguez, to talk about special programs.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Rodriguez. I'm the senior director for Advanced Academics and Mobile Legal Services. I'm your work, Ms. Renal, who is our new special education director. I will be discussing both programs that qualify as special programs, which is special education and bilingual education. As we know, in the district, it's two very important areas and two very important populations for our district. And so they require quite a bit of oversight and frequent monitoring, which is why we're going to discuss the type of support that we're providing for them. As we know, this population also comes with very explicit instructions from T E A, Texas Education Agency, to ensure that we're meeting timelines and public compliance and others as well. So I'm happy to announce that one of the supports that we refined this year is our bilingual special education campus check-ins. The frequency is every month, we'll be meeting with every campus face-to-face to go over two particular areas. One, compliance, which covers enrollment, services, and programming. The other is student achievement. We want to make sure that we're reviewing different data pieces of the campuses, items that we're analyzing ourselves in the office and that we're bringing to the campuses and putting on the radar. And what we've informed the campuses around is that these meetings are very formal. They're very much conversations so that we can share information with each other. It's not just us presenting and leading, but us being able to share information that may be a blind spot for them. And then they also share information with us so that we can then determine what type of support we can provide from the district level in these two particular areas, again, compliance and achievement. All for the effort of impacting student achievement, making a positive outcome for students through compliance checks and program implementation reviews. As we look at the presentation, some of the items that we'll, that will be hearing around our ALPAC, such as the language proficiency assessment committee. Our ALPACs are committee members that come together to conduct meetings regarding emerging bilingual students to ensure proper services and identification is occurring at the campuses. And then also we'll hear about emerging bilinguals or E Ds. Formerly, this was a population referred to as L E P students, limited English proficiency. We're happy that the state is moving to more positive meditation with our bilingual students, so now they're referred to as emerging bilinguals. If it's a student that's enrolling into the United States for the first time, acquiring an English language for the first time as well. And bilingual education, our key initiatives, and the things that we're bringing to our campus check-ins are compliance oversight, ensuring that we're meeting timelines designated by T E A, and those are best practices for us in the district. That we're ensuring that we're strengthening content-based language instruction to ensure that our students are strengthening their language development in English specifically, to ensure that they're mastering content. And then we also look for data-driven support, ensuring that we're looking at all kinds of data pieces, both at the district level and state level, to ensure that we're making the best time for our students and that they're, again, acquiring the academic language in English. And then providing professional development for our teachers to ensure that they have a strong language support, that they're implementing and continuing in the classroom, and provide support around pedagogy and instruction. Ms. Renal's going to come up and talk about her initiatives and special education as well.
Hello. First, I want to say it's an honor and a privilege to serve and join I S C as the new special education director. So some key terms that I'm going to go over that Joel here on my presentation to you is F A T, which stands for a free and appropriate public education. Federal law guarantees the right to a free, appropriate public education. It requires schools to provide specially-designed instruction and provide related services such as speech therapy, counseling, and transportation. A R D, admission, review, and dismissal. Meeting is a group discussion to determine if a student is eligible for special education services and to create an individualized education program if needed. I E P, individualized education program. This is an individualized education program that is designed to address a child's unique educational needs that result from his or her disability. During our campus visits, we implement our key initiatives with fidelity to ensure compliance and F A T for our students with special needs. These supports promote effective service delivery to meet students' needs and help them reach their academic potential. Compliance oversight, ensuring our meetings and documentation are aligned with legal requirements. Instructional and behavioral support. Collaborating and assisting teachers with strategies, accommodations, and modifications for students with special needs, which is tailoring instruction. Data-driven support, using student performance data to inform instructional adjustments and interventions. Professional development, offering training on I E P implementation, progress monitoring, instructional practices, and behaviors. At our campus visits, we review key areas with campus administration to ensure compliance and F A T. We review instructional arrangements in which we make sure students are in the correct educational placement according to their I E P, as well as the STAR data to make sure that students are taking the correct assessment per their I E P.
Some of the other areas that we cover during our check-ins, the bilingual compliance, to make sure they keep on the radar attendance, specifically emerging bilingual attendance, special education attendance. So that we make sure that these populations are constantly attended to decrease at a particular campus, at the district level, weekend intervene as well, and make parent contact and data. We look at teacher certifications. We're looking at parents and minor students, those who opted not to be in our bilingual program, and still have oversight, we still have oversight over them. And then we also look at coding as well, as we know that impacts state accountability and funding. If persons are coded incorrectly, there's a negative effect to the district. We want to make sure that we're catching any errors early on. And that's why these checks and balance check-ins really help to make sure these items are on the radar for both the campus and the district. And like I said, we lead the campus with recommendations as well, campus action steps, if you will, around what items we recommend them taking a lead on after we leave our visit. But we also know district action steps so that they don't feel that there's a lack of support. We also have items on our hand that we follow up with in between our first visit to the next visit. Here you'll see some of our campus visits that we've been able to conduct. As of tomorrow at noon, we will have visited all campuses, so we're kind of going to close our first round out. But here you'll see Fine Arts, Academy of Art, Cisnejos, H U G, Berales, and L B J. We have conducted Brentwood, Professor Garcia, tomorrow will be Memorial, and we're live. So again, making sure that we're meeting with campuses and the campuses determine who is the most appropriate person to be at that. Maybe we should open that monopolizing everybody's time. We know that being visible on the campus is critical. So the campus is very much a part of, who's going to be part of this? It's a principal, principal and assistant principal, and the campus will be involved as well. And it's been great discussion around what are the current needs and how can we support them forward. I wanted to leave you with other items that we touched on, particularly community involvement and ensuring that our students are participating throughout the community or bringing community resources to them. As you recall, our newcomer topic we held for our newcomer students last year at Oscongus Leadership School for Girls, giving our newcomer students a platform to share their story and how they've arrived to the United States for the first time. What has been their experience, but also what has been their experience in our schools? And what do we learn as a district from these particular conversations that we can enhance that experience for them as well? And ensure that we're supporting them as they're navigating from a new school system. At the bottom is a picture of our students who recently went to Texas State University for the first multilingual conference. Our students are from our Teaching and Learning Program and Memorial High Schools, among them going to bilingual education, I think they were three. And so they were able to experience speakers from, national speakers regarding multilingual practices, how to support multilingual learners in the classroom, and best, I don't know, pedagogy, which is mindset around how do I better understand the multilingual learning. And then Ms. Renal will also share some of the items for special education.
So we are continuing with the Department Practice of D O B to the Director, which is our parent advisory committee to provide our parents an opportunity to meet with me and get to know me as the new special education director. Ask questions and share their ideas to strengthen our special education community, and an opportunity for parents to connect and build relationships with other parents and staff members. We are also partnering with Integated Camp in implementing parent trainings for all parents in the community to gain information and an understanding of various topics, from understanding autism to home safety. And that's how, as Dr. Barzuka will come and talk about college, community, and military readiness.
Okay, we'll get along now. We're going to talk about our C C M R, college, career, and military readiness. This is goal three, and you'll notice the great increases that we've had in the past two years. I want to note that because that was a low, easy task, and it's been a lot of diligent work, almost be my optic as far as how we approach C C M R. The most recent data, you'll notice here where it says most recent, J F K is going to be at ninety-six percent. Now, this is the recent class of twenty twenty-four, so as a reminder, this will not, we will not see them take until next summer. But our scores are high, ninety-six, ninety-five, and ninety-eight, nominal scores, really, really good scores. We really proud of a lot of hard work, so we're set up for success for next year. So how do we do that? How are we able to move the needle in such a way? And quite frankly, good old-fashioned, just hard work, strategic. And we call this structured monthly meetings and support system. So as a collaborative effort between the high schools, principal, guides, and counseling team, and of course, the department heads here in the central office, we got together one summer and we reviewed key district indicators. We were looking at measures, and we were looking at student performance, and we were ensuring that the campuses had everything they needed relative to C T E, I B C testing, for example. Making sure that kids had access to our dual credit courses, making sure that we kept up with our enrollment numbers. Fixing any discrepancies that you may find within P E M, the dual was instrumental part of that role. We just sat down and we went kid by kid every month, and we just kept up with it. Through this cadence and through this process, I think we're getting pretty good at it now. We're able to really track and monitor how kids are progressing. And again, the proof is in the pudding. The scores keep for themselves, so we're really proud of that, and we're going to continue on that trend. But I just wanted to explain to you all that it just doesn't happen overnight. It's through the structured monthly meetings. Okay, so the first individual that's going to come and explain the support process, because really it's up to two mains, it's C T E and Advanced Academics. We're going to first talk about C T E, which is Career Technical Education, and I'm going to introduce Dr. Javier Uribe, our director of C T E, to take on that portion.
Good afternoon. I am Javier Uribe, the director of Career Technical Education. Sorry, can you hear me? So this is a, I think, the best program in the district. So C T E, and how we support C C M R is real simple. So this is our key terms. A cluster is a group of basically occupations, programs of study that are basically concentrated on one industry. The programs of study are the coherent courses in that program of study that are providing the training for the education or occupation in that industry. And the industry-based certification is a certificate or a professional license that qualifies a student as skilled to do that occupation. Currently, we have ten clusters and thirteen programs of study in C T E. Okay, so how do we support the campuses? We are in the, approaching the end of a five-year migration starting twenty twenty-one. It'll end in twenty twenty-six where C T E goes from an elective and a test, one and done, to a four-credit, four-year program. Currently, we are right now in the complete, a concentrator stage, class of twenty twenty-five. Name is have two courses and two credits and an I B C to give us a C C M R credit. By next year, in twenty twenty, class of twenty twenty-six, has to have three courses or four more credits and the I B C to be able to qualify. We are right now already pushing the completers, and there's a reason for that, and I will get to it. The way we handle this is we do progress monitoring, and we are implementing a test schedule, which is probably the first time that's being done for C T E. Okay, so these are the number of students we currently have in our programs. As you can tell, they're pretty robust. Okay, how do we, how do we get that? How are we going to be able to get to those concentrators and those completers? Well, we have to work, the C T team has to work with the campus admin, and we have to make sure that the programs are aligned. And we have a course of level one through level four in each one of our programs of study. And that's working with the admin so that they have everything in place by national schedule time. We also have to work with the counselors. This year, for the first time, we're collaboratively working with our counseling program, and we're providing year-round training to the counselors about the ins and outs of C T E. Our second training, mixed training, is coming up in October eleventh. We're also having to work with our teachers. Our teachers, for the first time, we're making them track the students from year to year so that they know what's, what kid they had freshman year, make sure that they can account for them their sophomore year, and so on and so forth. Our goal is to basically make sure that they're also recruiting. So we have a fall extravaganza every October, and we bring in every eighth grader from the district into the gym to basically see every one of our programs. And the last is we have to work with P E M's to make sure that our kids are coding correctly. That, right now, at this time, is working one hundred percent correctly. We also have to help the high schools by revamping our middle school programs. This chart here shows you that from this year forward, all seventh graders will take career and college exploration. This program was done with intention. It's designed, it has its own tweaks, but we also made some requirements from our teachers at the middle school that they have to bring in. Every teacher from our high school programs to talk to our seventh grader. Gus Garcia starts this week. They're bringing in from Memorial High School, the culinary and the business program teachers, and they will address every one of the seventh graders. This way, they know what we have in our schools and can make a better decision so that they can be in the correct pathway. So by the time they're in eighth grade, they will choose a pathway, and that'll be one class into their pathway, which gives us a head start. So by the time they get into high school, we only need three more, two more courses and three more credits for them to be completers. They want to, of course, that's going to be by their sophomore year, so that gives us a good advantage. So we have two years, and we have some kids that are still need a course or a credit year there, we can still get them. Our goal is to be one hundred percent, having all our C T kids meet completers. We also have a goal that by, by twenty twenty-seven, eighty percent of our two- Uh, we also have a goal that by, that by twenty twenty-seven, eighty percent of our juniors would have met that, uh, bar. Okay, we also have to have a pulse on the industry. Last year, we conducted sixteen industry-based or, uh, meetings, which are called advisory meetings. Uh, those are live advisory meetings. But we were able to evaluate and intentionally move them to lunchtime. We used to have them in the evenings, but participation was very low. By moving them to lunch, we more than increased the participation of our industry-based partners by over two hundred percent. Uh, the advisory meetings are, as you see up there, the first one in the fall is for them to come in, review, evaluate our facilities and then provide us feedback. We need to listen to them. Uh, part of that process of listening to them was with, you have the picture there on the side. We were in the process of creating another kitchen in, uh, in Memorial High School, another restaurant-style kitchen. Our industry partners told us that no, that's not the right way of doing it. They wanted fifteen cooking stations where they can get fifteen kids to cook at the same time and the wash area, all within a classroom setting. So, uh, that was a, that, that was, that saves us over two-thirds or sixty-six percent in costs by doing that. Uh, this was done in two weeks and that's an, that's an amazing accomplishment. Thank you to Mr. Williams and his, his program. Uh, they were able to accept the challenge and get it done and got it done in the summer. So Memorial has two classrooms like this. The second part is, the reason we're setting this testing deadlines, the reason we're moving everything up is because the spring advisory, we wanted to be a showcase for our, our students. We want, when we conduct the advisory meetings, our kids are already be certified and ready to go. So when they come, they can be hired. Uh, we need to make sure that our kids are ready for the workforce. Uh, not just saying that we are preparing them for the workforce, but actually have them ready for the workforce. And I just want to thank you all for letting me serve your children and students. Uh, and that's it. Mr. Lees is coming up here for advanced academics.
Good evening, again, Antonio Siro, Senior Director for Multilingual Services and Advanced Academics. And our vision for Advanced Academics is excellence and equity in education in Edgewood. And that's exceptional education for empowerment, engagement, future readiness. Some of the key terms which look completely wild on your screen in the middle of the hour record are TSIA, which is our TSIA Assessment, Techis Success Initiative Assessment, which is a requirement for our students for graduation, ensures that they are college-ready. Along with dual credit, uh, dual credit are advanced courses that our students take in order to earn college credit at no cost. And then UT OnRamp will be referred to throughout the presentation as well. Again, another advanced, uh, advanced course opportunity for our students to earn college credit through the UT University of Texas system. So some of the areas that we support in the department for our campuses are TSI preparation and college-part course support as well. So our students are getting the opportunity to enroll into college-part courses to better match with the TSI assessment and determine college readiness. We provide professional development at a college at an A-Phish level. We collaborate with campus administrators to ensure accurate scheduling of students in college-part courses, making sure the right kids are in the right seats. We also do a collection with the campuses to ensure that the students in a roster that's completing TSI reading or TSI math have truly completed that and have the other roster of those who are in progress to match with that assessment. We'll schedule boot camps for the district-wide, boot camps for our three high schools, Fine Arts, Memorial and JFK, to ensure that our students are having the opportunity to get another round of practice for the TSI assessment. And then we also do a district-wide purchase of Texas College Bridge, which is an online program that our students have the opportunity to engage in in order to determine college readiness as well. The other areas are about increasing dual credit and OnRamp's passing rate supports. We have a partnership with Alamo Colleges and to provide professional development for our teachers, uh, at the district level. And we also ensure that they participate in the required trainings for the colleges. Alamo Colleges provides them during summer prior to the school semester beginning. And then our teachers who are teaching OnRamp through the UT system also attend the UT OnRamp Professional Learning Institute, PLI. There's also the reference of this student, uh, the dual credit handbook for staff to ensure that there's alignment across our programs. Uh, and development is also one for students at families to ensure students are aware, families are aware of the expectations of enrolling in dual-credit classroom and what their goals are at the end of the course. EIC and Alamo Colleges collaborate regarding break checks, which means it's very important that we give frequent checks other than just up into the semester. So we're looking at colleges to ensure that our campuses are aware of where our students stand in different points of the semester so that they can intervene and ensure parent communication is happening. And then scheduling monthly check-ins is very similar to the bilingual special education check-in to ensure that administrators and administrators are aware of program retention updates and things that need to be adjusted based on the college specifications. Advanced Academics will also support advanced-based courses through college work. So again, professional development, we'll see that as a continuous theme throughout at each of these slides. Uh, we provide that both at the district level, but ensure that our teachers who are teaching advanced-based courses are also attending summer institute where they can vary specific content training throughout the summer. Uh, we also collaborate, continue to collaborate with campus administration to ensure compliance measures are met. That if we're going to offer an advanced-based course, that we've got the proper protocol to get college work to approve that particular course. And then we reduce student performance with administrators as well and help them make informed decisions around what courses to offer and what decisions we may make for students' achievement and what course selections we may make in upcoming semesters for those students as well, based on that. We have a partnership, uh, very close with Alamo Colleges specifically with Palo Alto, St. Philip's and San Antonio College. Uh, our, our support at the district levels to facilitate the MOU process. Uh, prior to school starting, to ensure they have a strong partnership with our, uh, with our colleges. We also budget for our programs to ensure that our students are able to take dual-credit courses with these particular entities at zero cost to them or their families. Uh, we also participate with partner leaders to ensure that any updates at the college level or, um, communicate with all stakeholders, principals, administrators and counselors at the campus level. And then we also continue to schedule and conduct program check-ins to ensure that we're meeting those expectations both at the district level and with the colleges and their updates and compliance checks as well. Retention of students in our early college high school and KETE program is critical for us as well. Something that we're very proud of is conducting annual recruitment presentations. This is where we get to go to the middle schools and top two eighth graders that are, uh, getting ready to go to our high schools and participate in the many programs that we have. We've talked about early college high school benefits, the KETE benefits and the various programs. Make sure that our eighth graders are making good decisions early on so that we can also facilitate the process of the college application that they also participated and make sure we share this information with parents that they're on board, uh, with students or why they're through each particular program. Uh, we collaborate with the campuses, we schedule check-ins to determine success and we guide them through, uh, the early college high school and KETE on the college application process, which is pretty lengthy. So we meet with students and bundle them into the, uh, computer lab to ensure that they're going step by step with one of our coordinators of doing all the college applications so that by the time the semester begins, um, they have lots of their traditional, so they can go through, but we're guiding them to the district level. And I'm going to pass it over to George Gavita to discuss parent engagement.
Good evening. My name is George Gavita. I'm the Director of Family Community Engagement. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come in, share a little bit about the initiatives and, uh, our programs that we have here in Edgewood. Um, first, I'd like to share as far as what our goal is. Within family engagement, uh, we always strive to provide the resources, tools, uh, support services to our families to be able to engage at home, uh, with their students. Uh, we know that when families are engaged, parents are engaged, guardians are engaged, we're going to see improved academic performance, better attendance, positive behavior, uh, stronger, a stronger school community, increased awareness and a supportive home environment. Uh, the past couple of years, we have been looking at family engagement with a different lens though because the reality is that not all families, uh, can attend in open house or can attend with the teacher or can attend, uh, a financial aid night. We do understand that families who work and have time to have responsibilities, they may not allow them to come to the campus. So our time with them is limited, uh, time. So when we are with them, we want to prepare them with those tools uh, that can allow them to engage at home, uh, also like in informal settings. And when I say informal settings, when they're at the grocery store, when they're having dinner together, when they're preparing dinner, we want them to be competent, uh, to be able to have a conversation with their students. Uh, but before going further, I do want to share the team that I currently work with. Very lucky to have an amazing team that helps us do the work of engaging with our families. Uh, we have Adelio Bedeppo, who's our family engagement lead. I'm very fortunate to have her part of the team. Uh, she not only helps our liaisons that are at the campus, but she also helps support families that come into the Emma Frye Family Service Center, uh, that are requesting support. Uh, we have Bianca Hernandez, Gina Limón Coleman and Denise Ramírez, who are family engagement liaisons who, uh, report to the family engagement department in Edgewood. But then we also have Maria Montiel and Sofia Martinez, who are liaisons that report to our operating partners. And we do work closely with them and include them in any programs or initiatives. And we do invite them to, uh, any community events, uh, that we see would, uh, benefit our families. Uh, the first initiative I want to talk about is our, uh, parent engagement initiative. Uh, we have been through the, uh, parent university program in Edgewood for about six years. Uh, our goal here is also to provide local resources and tools, uh, for our families, again, to be able to engage at home with their students. In the past, we brought in, uh, partners such as Texas A&amp;M Purview. Uh, we brought in, uh, SA Hope Center. We have brought in just various programs that are again going to give our families the skills and resources to be able to interact at home. Uh, last year, we did, uh, have a parent university where we partnered with the police department to, uh, educate our community about the dangers of Benzo. And this year, uh, working in the academics department, we plan on, uh, bringing in the different academic departments to be able to share with families as far as what resources and what support we offer students. Uh, we also do community, uh, resource events. Uh, for instance, last year, towards the end of the year, we did have a community plática where we invited various community partners. But, uh, we also invited our campuses to be able to share, uh, with our families what is happening at this campus. And we often use it as a recruitment tool, uh, to educate our families about the different opportunities, uh, we have at Edgewood. Uh, the next initiative we have is Abuelos Unidos, which is very near and dear to my heart. While all of our programs are special, I mean, this one is one that, uh, I, I love to be part of. Uh, I do like to share the story as far how Abuelos Unidos came about. Uh, this was shortly after the pandemic when we were coming back, uh, to school. I had a group of abuelos who approached me and said they were looking for a safe space. They were looking for a place to come back and start interacting with each other. Uh, the ultimate, ultimately, they wanted to play botea and do archery crafts. And I said, yes, those are things we will do, but we also want to connect you with, uh, different resources. So in the past, again, we've had, uh, our partner, Texas A&amp;M Purview, that's come in. We've also connected them, uh, with, uh, programs within the district like the McKenna Dento Program. Uh, our next Abuelos Unidos session will be on October the tenth, which is a Friday and, or this one will be very unique because we're connecting with, uh, another abuelo who is going to share the legacy event within the district. So we're really excited about bringing her in. Uh, we also participate in special initiatives. Uh, this past month, we did work with the Trote Department and Guidance Counseling on a project, project you matter. Uh, this happened for the month of September where we conducted home visits to locate students that may not have returned, uh, to school, the beginning of the school year. Uh, during this time, we were able to conduct over four hundred home visits, again, with collaborating with the emergency department and guidance and counseling and making over a hundred and fifty calls to locate, uh, these students. We also support our superintendent initiatives. Uh, I know that you're probably aware of the, uh, three different groups that we had last year. We had Women with Vision, our faith-based community council and our business community council. Uh, now that's going to be one combined group called the EIC Superintendent's Community Council. And our goal is to listen to our stakeholders, to, uh, discover priorities and build trust and hopefully use that information that we gathered, uh, to build a vision for the district. Our first meeting will be on October eighth here. Uh, currently, we have a, a, a really diverse group of individuals from the, uh, business community, faith-based community and from our Women with Vision, uh, group. Uh, I believe we have, as of this afternoon, forty-six individuals who have RSC. So we're really excited, excited to host them, uh, in October. Another initiative we support is the Community Plática. Uh, moving into this school year, our pláticas will focus on community safety. Uh, last year, we started off with pláticas toward the end, end of the year. We had one plática at Emma Frye, which was very successful. We brought in different resource partners, again, to share, uh, information about the different resources they provide. And towards the end of the year, we had another, uh, plática over at Loma Park, which was very, very successful, again, focusing on community safety. So I leave that for that slide and I will turn it back over to Dr. Lees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gavita. Uh, first of all, foremost, I want to apologize. I do not know why some of the slides have transposed. I know when we rehearsed earlier today, that was not the case. So I apologize for the slides there towards the end. I will do some extra print. Uh, other than that, I hope we gave you a clear, robust overview of the services that we provide to the schools. And, uh, at this time, if there are any Q and A questions, uh, thoughts, uh, we'll be here and we'll call individuals up here and answer as best we can. Thank you, sir. Any questions on the board? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah.
On the, uh, the, like, numbers. Uh, the, uh, early college, early college. Are we making sure that the, the courses they take and graduate with are the courses that are are recognized by the other campuses or other schools in the area?
Yes, sir. We work closely with the Alamo Colleges representatives and they have a high school coordinator assigned specifically to support the high schools in the district. Uh, so we work with them on the course offerings that are offered in their crosswalks. Uh, and then we have conversations around which course would be a better fit because it might have more limited exposure to other colleges. And we're having those adjustments in the past as well. So that does happen. Yes.
Go ahead. I also have a question regarding the early college. Well, my first question is, um, what type of degree is offered for the students that do obtain their, um, associate student?
It's an Associate of Applied Science.
Associate of Applied Sciences. And across Texas, is that the only degree that's offered or are there other degrees offered?
Uh, I'm not sure as to what else is offered as far as other early college high schools in other districts.
Yes.
Um, by the way, we've got that for us.
Okay. Um, just because of, like, especially, um, like, one of my main concerns is making sure that when the students actually do attend a four-year university, um, all those courses that they've taken within their time of the year, uh, do travel. But I know associates of applied science, it's typically different course offerings, like, it's harder in, like, science. But I know me personally, I took, I have an Associate of Arts and that really let me transfer with my full credits, uh, to the Arts degree.
And I, I apologize. Yes, we do offer as well, the Associate of Arts as well, both are offered. I think our contracts for students are the ones that earn their, uh, Associate Arts. So that is more transferable, I guess, than, yes, sir, you're correct.
Okay, so it's Associate of Arts and...
And then our, our computer science and cybersecurity, professional applied science.
And, um, what, what do we do to, like, know or let the students know, like, what kind of major they want to major in in the beginning? Just so they know when they do graduate out of Edgewood, they know, um, just their chan, colors, classes will transfer.
Yeah, we have something in place now. It doesn't know what we're going to refine as well. So part of our recruitment process, we do with eighth graders, we give them a presentation of what the program entails and how the long-term benefits are, and to the career field, um, and colleges that will support that particular, um, area. But we have been working with our colleges to let them know, we need something more specific from there and regarding their type of marketing to ensure that our students will be very specific, specific information around where else that we give them after that, that particular two-year degree. So it's still being refined, but there are certain things that are already in place.
Thank you. I also have a question for advanced placement. As a district, do we keep a record of, like, how many students actually accepted the credit in college?
That is usually collected through international fair accounts, but I can get further information on how do we eventually have that type of permission. So they can take it forward.
Thank you. I also have a question regarding the TSI. I was wondering if the TSI math and reading are taken together on the same day, same times? Or is it split in different...
We work with the campuses to make sure that they're separated because it is pretty rigorous for the students. They usually have prep on the same day as well. So we want to make sure that they are given two different opportunities for both different contexts.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more questions from the board?
I do have a question regarding our CTE.
I was looking at the fine arts cluster for the future, and I was just wondering if the engineering phase out of the fine arts academy and move to kind of candidate in the future?
Yes, it's already in phase two. It's a three-year process. Next year will be the last phase.
And then, uh, so basically, in the middle schools, we're going to start letting the students know that that program will be offered at that certain...
Yes. And I'm sorry. So we're actually ahead of schedule on that, on that program also. This is phase two, but we're actually, next year will be, it'll be completely out of fine arts. So it'll be at, at Kennedy. We're one year ahead on moving that program. Yes, we do, the middle schools are being informed. They have that seventh grade career college exploration where the teacher is going to, uh, to the campus to talk to the kids. That includes their engineering programs. The program that Kennedy is, uh, right now, one of the programs that we're looking at, working with the administrator to realign. Uh, right now, it's considered advanced manufacturing, uh, but the programs are interchangeable with engineering foundations, and that's what we're planning to move to.
Thank you. Uh, in my second question to the Fine Arts Academy, since we are going to possibly, well, we are going to be moving a program, do we see in the foreseeable future kind of bringing back programs that we did kind of have to step away from, like, the construction program?
We would have to consider it.
Uh, thank you. So like, um, stuff like considering, like, different program offerings, would this be considered in the advisory committee you were talking about?
Well, the advisory committee would need for a specific program study. Uh, this would be something that was requested by, like, a campus administrator. You would then have to do a feasible study if we can actually have that program.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions from the board?
Uh, do you have a question for special education services?
Uh, my question is, um, for your department, do you see any, like, challenges engaging our parents with students that receive special education services?
Challenges with engaging our parents?
Yes.
No, sir. I do not.
So, just about as I can jump down there. Being that Ms. Britnella is new over the years, we've done, uh, I would think a really good job. Pre-COVID, we had a parent advisory committee that I was very proud of, uh, increasing parent engagement. So when I was, uh, first hired here in Edgewood, that was one of the initiatives. Uh, post-COVID, we know that we've had to grow that program with the parent engagement. I know Mr. Britnella last year, uh, not last, two years ago, started the donuts with the director. That was one of the tasks along with Ms. Britnella that we talked about, is helping we make sure that we're engaging our parents. Um, as far as a challenge, I think it is a challenge at times to make sure that we have everyone that can be in attendance. But that is one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing to increase not only engagement with knowledge in the field of special education. Because right now, in the state, it's not anything that's not been talked about. There's a crisis, and we need all the support that we can get, not only from our community, but from our families so that we all are engaged and we are speaking to the right individuals, whether it's legislators or anyone else that can help us with that. And I'm very excited that the deputy of I S D, that we welcome that challenge, that we take on that challenge. And I personally, um, just, uh, kind of, just really excited about this. But the president of TKS, of president-elect, which is the Texas Council of Administrators in Special Education for the State of Texas, selected by our peers. So we are on the front lines of that and just ready to take that combat that, that we do need support in all areas. But I answered this very long, sir, but yes, we can always use support in engaging our parents, and the more parents that we can get. So I'm really excited that the donuts with the director, um, is starting, and Ms. Britnella is excited to take on that cause for our parents as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I was going to say a few things. So I think this, Selena, as you mentioned, you sound like laser focus. We're laser focused. Somebody said that earlier. Yeah, in the beginning of the presentation, you said something like we were being laser focused now. And actually, that's kind of what I saw today. Uh, a lot of what I saw was stuff we were talking about when I just got on five, six years ago, and it's finally becoming that, that focus that we, we had. And I say finally because it takes a long time, and we're finally getting to that, that result. Uh, but I was, I was very impressed by all of that. Uh, especially the CCMR scores, our percentages. I mean, high nineties, that's like, that's amazing because that's something I know we put a lot of effort into. So thank y'all for that. Y'all did a lot of work with that one. Um, and of course, Mr. Adiva, the CTE, I agree with you. And, and that's not just because I'm a CTE teacher. I do think CTE is the best, is the best program because I think it gets the students, it gets the students at the school. And I think when they, when they fall in love with those programs, that they, they, they just want to be there all the time. So I really appreciate that. Um, uh, this is not a question for now, but maybe for the board update. I want to, I want to see how, how it looks at the middle school level, like that pre-CTE kind of experience. Because I know they might not be able to get certifications of the IBCs, but at least that interest. And we can put in the, unless you want to hop up and...
Sure.
Okay, all right.
So... Yes, it's difficult to have eighth graders, you know, basically, these are high school level courses. Uh, and the state doesn't give us a break. But we decided to move, uh, the college and career exploration course into seventh grade for several reasons. One of those is exactly what you're saying. If we give the charge of the CT courses in seventh grade and eighth grade, well, you know, if you look at that, for them to be completers, they got to have three courses for four more credits. At least for freshman year, we wouldn't have to go to practice.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that's not, that's not, that was not feasible. So we moved it up. And the second reason was because, uh, some of our PTs in their crosswalks needed extra courses. And we only have a limited number of CT courses that we can give them, align them to, to give them back high school credit. So that's why we, we moved it up. And we also thought it was very important to address the question that people asked us, like, well, what programs y'all offer? And, um, we're going to go all the way up to kids coming in from freshman year. So now, you know, we're intentionally bringing in our teachers. And a good example, like Gus said, Gus is starting this week, and you know, where it starts the following week. Uh, the only week that they're not doing anything in October is during that week of extravaganza. And so this is to just the seventh graders. The eighth graders still get their extravaganza, but moving forward, a kid will always see the programs in their classroom in seventh grade, and then will be able to come here to Edgewood and visit each program, presented by the students. Our extravaganza is student-led, uh, and then so they can make the decisions on where they're going to go, which hopefully will be the, uh, giving better percentages than we have in our last year.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Those are, well, I had more, but we're going to move on. I'll save for the board update.
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
My one question is for parent engagement. Uh, you mentioned, uh, you can't turn with our operating partners. Can I just respond to a little bit? How is, uh, how can they deal with our operating partner of schools be different than our duties within our, our schools that are operating partners?
So, so just to clarify how it's a difference? Well, really, is it different as far as what they're doing on campus? Uh, I, I think the only difference might be the time that they're spending on campus. Uh, because one liaison, uh, does report directly to Gardendale, uh, and the other one reports to Stafford, Vision, Performing Arts, and to Barraclo. Uh, however, they still do the same job functions. Um, and then, as I stated in my part of the presentation, we do invite them to participate with us when, uh, or, uh, helping with any different initiatives.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Uh, Mr. Chavez, are you next?
No, you...
Oh, we can continue. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes. So the next piece, uh, piece to brief to go over is a few slides. It's just the District Improvement Plan for 2425. And basically, what I'm going to just review is just give you the overall, uh, how to read it, okay? You can receive the PDF file, and so I'm trying to give you an overview of how to read and how to open it up, okay? Uh, it's always grounded in the North Star goal and our L S E goals. You know, goal one, all of the six, and what the progress. So those are going to be tried to tie into those particular items. And just a point of clarification. The difference between the District Improvement Plan and the District Strategic Plan, there is a difference. The District Improvement Plan is a comprehensive academic focus plan that is, is recurring every year. We look at needs assessment from a year-to-year basis and come up with strategies and ways to raise achievement. That's the DIP, which is what I'm presenting. The District Strategic Plan is a plan that addresses important levers that is more long-term. Okay, because I know sometimes people get those too clarified, but what I'm covering is the District Improvement Plan. Here's the major components within the DIP. There is a comprehensive needs assessment, there's goals, there's performance objectives, and all these items are part of the, are the components within the District Improvement Plan. In a very, very simplistic way is there is a district improvement goal. We call it DIP goal. That's always going to be tied towards achievement or one of the other C goals. Each goal has performance objectives. So for this example, the performance objective can be reading and writing, or mathematics, or science, social studies. Right? Those are the performance objective. Each performance objective then has strategies. So like in this example, the performance objective is reading and writing. A strategy under reading and writing is implementation of science of teaching. Another strategy is the use of teach resource. And another strategy is progress monitoring, success assessment. Those are the strategies that fall under that performance objective. Okay, so now, you'll see DIP goal one, focused on student success. And parentheses is tied to priority one. And those are all the performance objectives right there. Reading and writing, mathematics, science, social studies, collectives, college, career, military readiness. There's one in choice of information and mass academics, engagement, embedded learning, acceleration, and intervention. Which, when you think about it, you heard many of those things being underestimated. A lot of the presentation on which you heard today come out of DIP goal one in the beginning of the week. Those stars indicate a direct tie to an L S E goal at some point. That's why you see a little star.
Yeah.
DIP goal two, focused on students, families, and communities. Notice theirs tied to priority two. The components there is family and community engagement. You heard that from Ms. Platica today. There's professional development in there, there's health, safety, and security. And then, of course, the safety plan. And then, of course, enhanced parent skills. So those are the components there under DIP goal two. DIP goal three, when we review it, you'll see that it's going to be tied to focus on core organizational improvement, which ties into priority number four. There's leadership development, high effective instruction staff, instructional staff, and then teacher retention. So it's all tied. DIP goal four, exceptional learners, which is tied back to priority one. And this is talking to our special groups such as special education, English language learners, which you heard some discussions today, migraine, uh, and dyslexia and the Kenny mental. I apologize. I do not know what happened this morning with my lectures. I promise you, it was risky. I don't know the migration of the slides, but I apologize for that, uh, that break there. But it is migrant students and dyslexia, along with the Kenny mental. And then, under DIP goal five, student support services. It covers, uh, priority one, two, and five. Under this area, you'll see, uh, strategies for early childhood education programs, guidance and counseling, social, emotional, and mental wellness, healthy lifestyles, streaming, and activities. And before you go ahead there, uh, before I pass off to Mr. Chavez, just to know that the DIP is always in the document and is always being adjusted. So as we are engaged with the learning and see how student outcomes are coming up throughout the year, we may have to adjust the DIP at any time to reflect the needs of the district moving forward. Several are standstill documents, always a limited entity, and always being adjusted at any time. Okay, and I hope that today, you heard many elements of the DIP here.
Mr. Chavez?
Mr. Chavez?
While I'm preparing this, I wanted to go ahead and say that normally, I'm here. Uh, we would have access to plan for learning. Uh, and we're going to have that session for board members. We're going to reset your passwords and give in your logins. And we're going to do that for the November 4th, uh, board workshop. As a matter of fact, we might do that in advance at the board workshop and call you a little bit earlier. But, uh, that already hasn't changed, so we'll still have the same looking fields last year. Excuse me. Uh, well, with the DIP, if you know the DIP, uh, so follows the Campus Improvement Plans. So in November, we're coming forward with the Campus Improvement Plan. That's the improvement plan for every campus and also our targeted improvement plans. So you'll have an ample opportunity to work with that particular document. Okay. Okay, today's our goal, so our joint monthly monitoring report for October, and it falls under Study Session 4C. And I'd like to tell you that in this particular area, I've worked closely with our reading coordinator, Ms. Marissa Bettes, who's responsible for a lot of the pieces that she sees here in terms of training, in terms of also getting data. I'd also like to thank the research and evaluation team for gathering the data so that we can place it in today's format. So, let's start off. This is the, I believe, Ms. Selena, is the first time that they've seen this, is that correct? Okay, so as you know, we had two, two less schools from last year to this year. So if you look at our 27, 28, at the upper left-hand corner, uh, we now will have 14 schools, uh, that we want to make sure that in our Edgewood, North Star goal, uh, that all schools will be rated as A or B. And that now is total down to 14 campuses. As you can see in 21, 22, we started off there, where it says start here, with four schools. Uh, 22, 23, and 23, 24, we had no accountability ratings. Uh, the state did not release any of the kind of good reviews. So this year, 24, 25, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we'll get some ratings, and that target is 10 schools to be A or B. It goes up in 25, 26, 11 schools, 12, and then 14, 27, 28. If you look on the right-hand side, you can see all of our strategic goals. Uh, goal, goal one, priority one, is our third grade reading, and we kick off this month to look at the third grade reading component. Uh, this is our EIC strategic goal number one. And looking at third grade, it'll be 26% to 60% by June 2027. As you can see, it was slated here for September 30th. Uh, we also have our quarterly progress tracker. That particular piece of information will be provided at the October regular board meeting. And of course, goal one, priority one, is going to be our focus today. And I'd like to thank the academics team, that group sitting behind me. We did an outstanding job articulating all of the work that they do in every aspect of academics. And again, this is one of many of the four content areas for grades K-1, 2, and 3 for reading, that they focus on. All those things, same things I'm going to mention also in passing. But again, they did an excellent job in defining many of those strategies that we're going to cover today. Uh, here's some working vocabulary. Uh, again, you can see many of these pieces that you're already familiar with. I know Mr. Fryd didn't explain emergent bilingual, uh, high-quality instructional material, what instructional courses are, learning rock walks, and instructional rounds. Uh, you're familiar with the MAP growth test. Uh, PLCs, professional learning communities, read diagnostics... Uh, PLCs, professional learning committees, reading diagnostics, and special ed. These are all covered here in these two slides, but also, uh, covered in more detail by the academics team. Okay, I apologize, this looks rather busy, but this is all for early reading for grades K through three. This is looking specifically for grade three. Now, status is on track. This year, we had a big beginning of the year assessment from September ninth to the twentieth. We actually went an extra day and went that Monday after, the twenty-third. Uh, we had some challenges with some of our technology and some, uh, internet network challenges, but those have been overcome. Uh, so, this first, beginning of the year, P O Y, is a baseline for the year. Uh, we'll have a progress check in the middle of the year, around, uh, December, January. And then, of course, we'll align instruction at that time with the end of the year, serving as the final outcome. Uh, as we said earlier, uh, this is a reading diagnostic, the time was missing, and we utilized for this assessment, uh, amplified M-class for grades K through two. We had one thousand five hundred fifty students take this assessment, uh, during that time period. Uh, and you can see risk barriers, uh, maintain consistent implementation supported monitoring through the campus walk, instruction around, and data review sessions. All those pieces the academics team just went over. So, we have some of our key initiatives. We have six that are outlined. Uh, the first was making sure that we use a high-quality instructional tier, H Q I N. Uh, Dr. Basutin went over that piece as part of our tier, of our tier disruption. Now, this particular piece, we wanna make sure that we're, uh, having effective training on this and continue to strengthen. Uh, Dr. Basutin has seen developed a professional development tracker. Uh, on August ninth, eighth to the ninth, we had a hundred and sixty-two teachers attended two-hour sessions. We're also getting feedback on how they believe that PD went, it was the highest. Strongly agreed PD was effective, that's a five out of five. All those teachers rated this, uh, the lowest score was four, perhaps. Now, uh, we have our reading categories, we have twenty-nine teachers enrolled at ten sessions. Uh, we're making sure that all of our assessments are aligned, uh, to grade three, uh, T standard, and our other T standards in K through two. Uh, and we have a hundred percent of our K through three reading assessments that are aligned. We utilize our instructional coaches to, they're on a cycle, a coaching cycle for all the teachers. Uh, it started this past week, as a matter of fact, nine twenty-three goes to eleven-one for the first round. Of course, our professional learning committees, uh, making sure that they're logging their attendance to ensure that they attend these particular pieces. And finally, monitoring these through district walks and other pieces that they are on the campus constantly. Okay, so let's go to the goal progress measure one point one. Uh, this looks at kindergarten, you're, these are goal progress measures to measure how we're progressing for grade three. Uh, I'm just gonna explain this one time to look at, it's basically the same spotlight. We have here on the big screen, our baseline of twenty-twenty-two, third grades are thirty-six percent, as we stated over here. Uh, our goals are in black, uh, twenty-three goal, twenty-four goal, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. Uh, the end of year for twenty-twenty-three was fifty-two percent. Uh, clearly surpassed the twenty-twenty-three goal at thirty-nine percent. In twenty-five, twenty-four, rather, end of year, notice we had a straight progression upwards, and again, clearly passed, uh, the twenty-twenty-four goal of forty-two. Uh, the beginning of year, this year, uh, in September, uh, we're at forty-four percent already with the goal meeting at forty-six. Uh, again, the source of data was M-class amplified reading diagnostic beginning of the year. Uh, this was, uh, the piece that looks at the sub-population. And I'm gonna use this thing again, I'm only gonna go for once, but, uh, I'm using here for the English and Spanish overall, Kinder, M-class reading. The hot goal here is in, uh, yellow, forty-three point five, or forty-four percent, as stated in the diagram, or in the graph. You have a breakdown here of all of the campuses, uh, the numbers that they have at, uh, well below benchmark, below benchmark, at benchmark, and above benchmark. What we look at is we look at these two pieces here. Those students have scored at benchmark and above benchmark, and that total comes out to be forty-four, forty-three point five percent. We have a total of five hundred and twenty-four students in kindergarten, uh, that did both. Now, this next piece, as Mr. Frydick said, is our emergent bilinguals. I want you to see this number here, eighty percent. Those students are doing outstanding. Remember, many of them are managing to, to, uh, to, to language, but this is in kindergarten, right? So, this is really amazing. Uh, here, our special education. Our special education is sitting here at thirty-two point seven, or thirty-three percent, about ten percentage points below, uh, all students here. And then, of course, here for ECO DIS, uh, forty-one point four percent. You're gonna notice that these two are very similar, simply because our ECO DIS is a little bit over ninety-two percent. Is that correct, Mr. Basutin? Thank you. Uh, so, you can see these trends, uh, and you'll see these trends kind of continue. So, let's go on to the next level. GPM goal progress measure one point two, which is grade one, okay? Again, you can see where they are at, that's our baseline, how they've increased and met the goals. This year, thirty-seven percent, our goal's at fifty-one percent. I'm more than confident that they're going to reach that. Remember all six of those pieces that we went over at the beginning of this presentation? All those strategies that they're implementing, daily, weekly, monthly, and monitoring those pieces? We have complete confidence they'll reach that, with the goal being at sixty-one percent. As we look at the data, again, uh, we can see here, we had five hundred and four students in first grade at thirty-six point five or thirty-seven percent. If I move over here now to the ECO DIS, thirty-five point six. Again, very similar. Uh, we had our, our, uh, emergent bilingual students at fifty percent. Again, the same pattern that you saw with kindergarten, you'll see, uh, here, uh, in these other examples. Seventeen point five percent, uh, for special education. Uh, goal progress measure one point three, percentage of students in grade two. Uh, as you can see, uh, we started off at twenty-nine percent. Uh, we beat twenty-three, we beat the goal. Uh, you can see that's an increase from twenty-three to twenty-four, still beating that twenty-four goal. This year, we're starting at thirty-nine percent. Six points up from the goal to forty-five percent. Okay, so, we look at the data, again, we can see that pattern, thirty-seven, thirty-eight point five, here with thirty-eight point two. And you can see our, again, our E emergent bilingual, sixty-three point two. And then, here we can see our, our special ed population, thirteen percent. As we go now to, this is the actual North Star here, so now, I wanna preface this to the board members. Before, we've been using, uh, M-class amplifier, which is a reading diagnostic for grades K one and two, right? We do not use that for grade three, because it's a star level grade. We're using N W E math, because it's a good determinant for star proficiency. We do not use N W E math for K one and two, because they have those particular pieces specifically for a making study that goes in grades three through eight. So, we're not gonna use those two that are changing, but we will use them for third grade, because if you look at the goal, who scored, meets or above on star reading. Okay? So, let's look at this one. Baseline is twenty-six percent, third grade in the year's star was nineteen percent, the goal was thirty-three. Notice the next year after, twenty-four, we're sitting at twenty-three percent, going up to forty. This year, we're starting, utilizing the beginning of the year projected star proficiency from N W E A math at twenty-eight percent. So, I do feel that at the end of the year, we're gonna get very close to our forty-six percent. All those pieces that you see in this academic team behind me, and the office of school leadership that's sitting down here in the center, they're working diligently to ensure that these scores go up, and they're diligently, aggressively monitoring the work that they're doing. Here is, uh, sorry, didn't put the L P's here, but we already know for, for math, the twenty, uh, twenty-two point six. This is just a raw score. What we did is we had to look at the projected for star, that's where you preset the twenty-eight percent. Again, down here, eighteen percent, a little far off than we've seen before. Here, we have, again, our, uh, emergent bilinguals above five percentage points, approximately, above our entire group. And special ed's sitting at seven point, uh, eight, I need five. Okay. So, as we all know, the superintendent's evaluation is based on this, uh, this point in time, which provides a monitor, simply because we wanna monitor how, we notice some very good scores there, but we need to keep on monitoring as we go through. We can, consistent, uh, focused on consistent foundational skills, monitoring participation in small group, using M-class and high-station interventions, uh, district-focused coaching cycles on first grade, administrative instructional coach collaboration, and some of the refinements. Those before, those reinforcement things are what we continue to keep doing. The refinements, I apologize for that, I was saying that earlier. Refinements here are things we're gonna adjust and tweak a tad bit. So, the coaching cycle's gonna be priority grade one and two, in two-week cycles. And, of course, they're gonna continue to support tier one, construction, instructional chemistry across the district. And district PLC attendance required for all teachers K through two. Okay. Yes, questions?
Uh, just from looking at the, looking at the data, um, what systems, what in process, or, or what do we do differently that really shows that our emergent bilingual students are outperforming, are performing better than our other populations?
What data do we use, or what strategy are we using?
What strategies are we using?
We'll bring out the expert.
So, some of the things to keep in mind is that, uh, through research, uh, it's not that the students are learning two languages, just the brain development that happens. So, we did have, we've had our dual-language program, um, in, at least over the last five years. This is the first time we're willing to fifth grade, but we had it from kindergarten to fifth grade now. So, our students have been learning two languages, and our students, our teachers have been given specific training on dual-language practices, second language strategies to support Spanish development and English development. So, that the goal of our program is for our students to be able to communicate fifty, fifty percent of the time. So, fifty percent in English, and Spanish have a very straightforward approach, and that starts at the very early age in kindergarten. The other thing to keep in mind is that Spanish is a very transparent language as well, so students are, can say this as one in Spanish. Um, have less rules to follow when developing a language, so maybe they're English.
But isn't it back to finding, anybody who's a dual language excels fast in this, uh, mono language? That's good research.
Yes, sir, there's a, the graph, that's very popular, known by Thomas de Collier, that goes into the research around dual-language programs. It's a different one way and two-way, and we offer both, and that's the reason.
Thank you, Mr. Frydick. Yes, sir.
Uh, is our-
Next question.
The, the data that we're looking at for the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, uh, is it kind of the same or pretty consistent from years past on kind of the data like that we pull at the beginning of the year, or the end of the year?
Uh, so, what I showed you in the past is what the end of the year is. I did not show beginning, middle, and end, because it'd be pretty wide. Uh, but I can tell you by looking at the beginning of the year in comparison to the previous year, and in comparison to the goal, thirty-nine percent to forty-five percent, uh, we, we went clearly about eleven percentage points over, uh, twenty-four goal, and nine percentage points above the twenty-three goal. So, we feel that the six percentage points is gonna be easily surpassed, if not higher. And again, uh, that, that, that same pattern occurs in K one and two.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, yes.
This next piece here, uh, is a monthly recording board agenda. Uh, and that's purchase additional Ureca math audits for students in grades three and four, as you know. Uh, the academic department went up to grade three and four, so we're getting the complimentary services and supplies for that. Thank you, board. Okay, Dr. Hernandez?
All right, guys, so, uh, typically at this time, you would see Ms. Martinez up here, Ms. Martinez is not able to do with us this evening. So, uh, I'm gonna step in and present with the assistance of one of our folks on only two items that are new. All other items that are particular to the business and finance presentation are typically recurring items that you will see at this time of the school year, as is the past. You will see, uh, talking points for all items that are coming to you. Uh, board members, uh, you'll get that in this week's board update and next week's board update, as well as I'll check in with you to see if there's anything, uh, any additional questions that you need answered that we can provide for all board members. So, I'll take you directly to those. Uh, these are the members of the business and operations team, once again. Uh, Ms. Martinez would normally be up here, but those are the rest of the individuals. Uh, these are the items that are being brought up to you this month for consideration, as mentioned before. The only item that is new, uh, completely new, is five N, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Grayhouse to start making his way up here, uh, as that item is the one that he's wanting to bring to you this month. And so, again, I will turn it over temporarily to Mr. Grayhouse, and then I'll come right back and finish with one other slide, and then I will turn it over.
Thank you, good evening, members of the board. Today, I'm presenting to you the, uh, proposed attendance zone boundary changes. As you know, we closed RIN and Winston, and this requires rezoning of, uh, the neighborhoods to, uh, other campuses throughout the district. And this is important to note, that every student needs to have a homeschool, uh, to, that, that is on their record, uh, based on where they live. And while we do have open borders, uh, where a student can go to, to any school, they do start first at their homeschool, and then there's a transfer process for that. There's a reason for that as well. We have certain programs at certain schools that are not at other schools. And we need to make sure that if the student has a special program need, that we, uh, place that student at a campus, uh, that has that program. So, that's just an oversight that we provide. What you'll see in front of you is the actual map. It's, uh, you'll see how we've shifted. First, let me describe what you're looking at. It's a little disorienting, I've looked at it quite a bit. So, the lines themselves that you see, the red lines on the, on the elementary map, and then the blue lines on the middle school map, those represent boundaries from last year. The colored or shaded areas that you see represent the new, uh, proposed boundaries. And we, and what I'll do is I'll stop, and I'm gonna explain some of the things about this, but I wanted to talk about the middle school first, because I do believe it'll be the most simple. There's quite a few more of the elementaries there. But with the middle school map, what we've done is we've simply taken RIN zone out of the picture, and the middle school map now matches the high school map. So, those attendant zones are exactly the same. If you're at West Garcia, you're attending Memorial, if you're at Brentwood, you're attending J I K. So, on the elementary map, we kind of shifted things clockwise a little bit, as you look at, 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 uh, at the map clockwise, and then again, some kind of clockwise. They kind of spread out a little bit across those zones. Um, but you'll see paralysis where Winston is, paralysis came down, uh, where Winston was supposed to be, or where Winston was. And then, the rest of the area that was Winston's down there in the green have moved up to H B G, with all of the others moving around, uh, that area. You'll notice that we've got focused campuses too. These campuses do not have boundaries. Uh, Fine Arts, Las Palmas, Cisneros, and Gardendale are not boundary campus, campuses. Uh, these are not campuses, uh, these are special campuses where we do transfer students into those campuses for programs. So, with respect to the, the new, the new boundaries, are there any questions? I'm gonna give you enough time to take a look at them, uh, and then I'll take any questions that you have. Unless, is, if Ms. Aldua, uh, and I work on this, and, uh, do you have anything that you wanted to present around this as well? You can come for any. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I guess probably one question is, uh, 'cause I also know that Stafford is, uh, an eighteen eighty-two operating school, but, um, so, but it's also a bounder school, sort of?
It is, because it has a full program for pre-K to fifth grade.
Okay, and, um, like, schools like that, uh, I did think, like, in the past, that that school was kind of like, kind of almost at capacity, and it's also, but that school also, uh, is a transfer school for students, like, other schools to attend that school also?
So, Stafford's capacity right now, uh, is at six hundred and twenty-seven, and our enrollment there is at six hundred and ten. So, we are about ninety-seven percent. Uh, Stafford is up, uh, sixty-four students from last year at this time. That's the impact of the, of the boundaries of sixty-four students, uh, to Stafford from last year.
Thank you.
Yes?
This is a demographic study, or is it done provisionally?
So, it's done both. So, the things that we take into account are school capacity and the population. So, we had to do, I think there were two or three different versions of this, um, as we moved around and looked at the actual capacity of the building. And we got the capacity, uh, we used a demographic study that was done as well, that helped to inform this. So, we are right, we did our best to equal things out to the best of our ability for every school. The only school that we have that really sees an uptick, a significant uptick, is- The only school that we have that really sees an uptick, assuming it's an uptick, is Gus Garcia. Gus Garcia will, uh, according to our enrollment now, will have two hundred and thirty-six students. But even then, we're at eighty-nine percent capacity at Gus Garcia. So those are the considerations, go ahead, guys.
Just to add, we often use consideration of major rural areas as far as those are concerned, or how to describe some implications without just all over.
Any further questions?
Yes, I'm just gonna say, I've always had a problem with this map.
This one?
Any of the boundary maps, those, uh, if I may?
Yes, please. You wanna use this?
The student, the actual where people live, this is all nothing, this does not, this is a false.
That's why it's such a big area of green to go up there.
Needs to be a different color, that's why I said, it needs to be just shown that it's not.
Oh, you, you need to avoid color, like gray or black down on the list.
We should only show where we have students coming from, population.
Okay, understood.
That's my two cents about it.
Understood. No, it, it does, it does reference the full boundaries of the district, but yes, right, I think that is my main consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gara. Uh, my other question is, um, the little triangles, do they represent like apartment complexes in our district?
The triangles are now, of course, not marked on the legend, that's great. I'm not entirely certain, I can give that, I can give that answer to you. Do you remember Ms. Basilina's triangle side? I know.
I think they might be apartment complexes. But, um, is this gonna be the boundary map that shows like on the T A website with all the school districts?
This will be on our, on our website, and I guess I don't know if it's out of T A or not, maybe on our website.
Yeah, I think it's the school district locator map that the T A.
Yeah, this creates a K E T file that allows for someone to put in their address and tell you what your homeschooling.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Gara, let me add, let me add one more to your comment. For the reason that Mr. V brought up and, um, who we were just discussing, it may be difficult to add a change there because, because these boundaries are online and because these boundaries are also looked at by the city, and because sometimes they're looked at by T A. If we change anything there, I don't know that anybody's gonna understand the full effect of what that does. So I don't know, we'll, it doesn't take a lot of work to look at it and maybe, uh, send, send it up to the student and see what they think. Typically, we're, we're asked not to touch these just because outside people in the district won't know what it means. Yeah, I mean, we know what it means, but if I'm looking at the outside and we put something else that's, um, maybe, we don't wanna do that.
I, I also wanted to find out that, because I did like research this, but I also did see that like where the bases, like most of that land is, um, in the base area, like over there on the left side. So I don't know if like that was back in the day, like, because technically I feel like that land should go to Blackley and I think.
To what?
I feel like that land should, like originally have been part of Blackley Independent School District, but it's just kind of crazy how it's in our district's boundaries.
Really, it comes back from, back from South San, South San Diego, this one way, South San Diego, this one way, this one.
Way out, way back, yes, yes. And then like, and I don't even know that they're designated too much on, on the basement. I'm not, I've seen the basement, and I don't even see, I've seen them mentioned that they're there, that there isn't a designation. So again, I worry about tampering with it too much, because it might need to leave somebody that doesn't understand the dynamics of this. So, okay, guys, I'll take us now to, uh, our last slide, and this is one of our last slides. Uh, so I want to bring here attention to a couple of things that are gonna be coming to you, board. So typically every year, we will bring, um, the, not every year, every month, a multi-financial statement. That's not anything new, those are things that you get every month. Um, I do wanna highlight for you this month, if you're going to start getting the board updates, highlights that will indicate to you where our fund balances and also where our expenditures are. That is not anything new, uh, things that you're used to seeing, but here's, here's what I wanna point out to you. Last year, when we closed the budget, we brought to you about an eight-point-two deficit, uh, budget. It looks like with the hard work of, uh, for two years, with the hard work of our, uh, financial services department, and I can say that again, because October next month, we will get the formal first rating. I know I mentioned to you guys that we're gonna get superior. Next month, we'll get the formal first rating, and that's what it's formal mean. It basically means we get the email that says, this is now formal, we're living here, um, in your district, your district data. But the other thing we're doing is we are starting our budget process for twenty-five, twenty-six, starting in November. We typically do not bring to the board, uh, the budget calendar till November, maybe December, looks like that. You'll see that in the board update this Friday and then next Friday. But the reason we're moving this up this month is because we wanna get a head start. There's a lot of programs to take into consideration. This is also a legislative year. I'm still gonna be, we're still gonna be working with making the best decisions that we can based on what we know. Uh, I'll take you back to the last previous, uh, sessions. Remember that those sessions do not end until June. That's assuming that our governor doesn't call a special hall meeting, or he brings them back in. If you recall the last time, I believe we had three additional, and we really didn't know anything until that next spring. And so, based on that, I wanna make the best decision possible. I wanna take you back to the comment that I made about the deficit budget. So we took an eight-point-two million deficit, uh, budget to you last year. It looks like in the end it's going to be one point four million after all, I'm saying one point four, it's one point three-six, but I'll round it up, right? So it's gonna be about one point four million, but let me tell you why. We brought it that high because we believe we're gonna have some major H, H VAC issues. We still will probably have those, but we moved those into S R two funding. Today is actually the last day that S R two being covered, all facets of S R, September thirtieth. We've been preaching that for two years now, as soon as we found out. So after today, can't use S R anymore. But with that said, uh, we've moved prior expenses into the S R budget, but what does that mean? That means next year, we may have to come to you, uh, board officers. I've already started a conversation with you about one of our building's potential needs that we're planning for. But the rest of the board, when I get a little more, uh, information on that, I will bring it to you. But at this point, based on what I know today, which is I don't have any final information for nature planning, um, we wanna make sure that we have the most accurate books in terms of where is our, um, deficit that'll land for this year, it's one point four million. Now, remember, you've heard the word scrubs, we're scrubbing the budget, you've heard me say that, or Miriam has said that in other years. We will still scrub the budget in the spring. If there's any money that isn't being used, we will move that towards, uh, any deficit that we have. So it may turn out that, uh, like in other years, we don't end up with one. I'm, I'm not promising that, there's always a need. Uh, academic services just went through all the different needs they have. And so, any money that we have, we definitely need, uh, and of course, our buildings always need perp appeal and other upgrades. And so again, we may bring something to you, um, in the spring with regards to budget recommendations for twenty-five, twenty-six. Because of a building need, some of those things could happen, it could happen overnight, but we have to jump in and get those fixed. And so again, you'll hear a little more of this at the first, uh, at the first rating meeting next month. Uh, and that is at the beginning, at five-thirty next month on October fifteenth. Uh, that will be the start of our October regular board meeting, and then that's it. The rest, the rest of the items for tonight are items that you would typically hear, which are, like I said, the budget, the draft budget calendar, you'll get that in the board update for the next two weeks, and that's it. So any questions on anything that I just spoke?
Yes?
For the record, this one, that is running at five-thirty-nine.
Okay, five-thirty-nine, thank you. Any other questions before I turn it over, because this is our last slide. And board members, also, you will get, um, the presentations that were brought up tonight. Any adjustments that we made, any questions that were asked, thank you for all the board members that asked a good question. Uh, we will put that in the board update for the benefit of you, uh, do you have those later? And so, okay, I'll turn it over to, uh, for Zion. We use the older term to describe.
All right, yeah. Okay, the time is now, uh, seven oh three. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gara, move the motions, is there a second? Mr. Tantoyo, seconds, is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, all those against, say nay. Okay, motion passes. See y'all next time.